If not, thank you all very much.
So, the last item on tonight's agenda is on school changes update, community feedback, case study regions and KPIs and the following commitment and strategy of the AISD 2015-2020 strategic plan are being addressed. Core belief two, we will create an effective agile and responsive organization and commitment eight, generate leverage and utilize strategically all resources. Dr. Cruz?
Thank you, President Rodriguez. As we continue then in the next conversation, want to highlight that you have information in your board packet. We also have additional maps that we put right in front of you that, maps that you had seen before and one that we prepared based on some feedback. So, want to just continue the conversation around school changes that looks at multiple guidelines and factors under each guideline, also the key performance indicators. We've included more information around those, what they would, what they could look like. Also want to, you know, review those with you as well. As far as discussion, this will come back in May and would come for a vote as far as the guiding principles in May. Let me turn this over to Matias to highlight some of the key information and take us through some of the, some of the information before the board specifically on our maps.
Thank you, Dr. Cruz. My name is Matias Segura, the operations officer for the Austin Independent School District. Over the last month or since we last met, we've been working aggressively addressing all the goals in the reinvention plan. We've continued to make updates to the map based on feedback that we heard from y'all. You have three maps in front of you as part of your packet, map A, map B, and map C, and we'll talk about that a little bit further. We've had multiple engagement meetings. Renee will talk about those in a bit. We've also made some refinements to the guiding principles based on feedback we heard from the trustees as well. As we move through the process, just so you're aware, we're actively developing the tools that we'll use to analyze each of the scenarios, building up the models to evaluate what long-term impacts each scenario might have, both academically, financially, operationally. So, really just building up all the different tools that we're going to use once we have the planning region set and begin to evaluate how these scenarios play out. So, to Dr. Cruz's point, you have a couple documents. The first is the guiding principles document. The, how it's different from the last time that you saw it is that initially in the first document, you saw some kind of leading points above guiding principle number one. Those have been removed. We felt as though that they were a little bit too abstract and that didn't really get to the point of the guiding principles document, again, which is meant to be an internal document kind of serving as our, a framework for our analysis. You can also see that we began to identify KPIs, key performance indicators that we might consider for each of the guiding principles. It's important to note that, you know, KPIs, you know, are very important, but they have to be normalized. We have to make sure that we're using them appropriately. We have to make sure that the data that we're using to develop them is consistent. So, a lot of what we're doing right now is going through a quality assurance and quality control process, making sure that our data is consistent. One of the things that you might want to note is that, you know, regarding 2017 bond projects, you know, we have to assume that a modernized project will yield a 95 FCA score or ESA score. So, just going through and making sure that we have those types of clarifications within the dataset. As you move through the document, you know, you'll see that guiding principle number two, we have the KPIs identified below it, ESA score, FCA score, and some of the accountability ratings. We can talk about that further when y'all have questions. One of the more significant changes is in, as it relates to guiding principle number three, if you recall, guiding principle number three, used the word neighborhood. And based on feedback that we received, not only from y'all, but as well as for some other folks, it became clear that neighborhood was, was difficult really to define. And it also perhaps painted us into a corner if we were looking at different ways to evaluate opportunities. So, we made an adjustment and we are now using maintain assigned school concept and other school choices. The two factors beneath it remain unchanged, but we believe that that modification allows us to do what the intent was within the guiding principle to begin with and removes any kind of confusion regarding the neighborhood word. You can see that the KPIs identified that are tied to guiding principle number three include bus ride time enrollment data by student group, proximity from current, currently assigned schools. Moving on to guiding principle number four, not a lot of significant changes here, but you can see the KPIs that have been identified. We can talk about those further in the qual, in the question and answer portion. And then lastly, guiding principle number five, one of the things that's difficult regarding guiding principle number five is, you know, how we might identify KPIs or targets. A lot of the factors regarding guiding principle number five are tied to opportunities. And so, really trying to develop a way to identify opportunities, but also being mindful of the fact that they're going to be very, very different all across all the scenarios. And so, just making sure that we define KPIs that are appropriate, but also that they can't be so defined that they limit our opportunities once we get to the, that part of the, of the process. The other document that you have, or the other set of documents that you have are the maps. I think that's where we'd like to get a lot of y'all's feedback this evening. Draft map A is really the same map, actually, it's exactly the same map that we presented to y'all in the board retreat several weeks ago. We do have some additional information included within it, including the socioeconomic information as well as the demographics for each planning region. You can see that the planning draft map A includes seven different planning regions, northwest, north central, northeast, central north, central south, southeast, and southwest. The initial logic behind this map was that we would have balance regarding the number of schools, not necessarily the number of students, but the number of, of schools. And so, this map generated planning regions that included between 10 and 14 elementary schools. Some of the feedback we received regarding this map was that perhaps we weren't really challenging the east to west opportunity, and so, we took that into consideration, as well as trying to make sure there was more balance, you know, regarding kind of academic planning opportunities once we get there. And so, that's really what informed the next map, which is map B. So, when you look at map B, you can see the same information is included. We've now transitioned to a strategy that includes five different planning regions. We have north, north central, central, south central, and south. This one, we think, provides a lot of opportunity regarding the way we look at different solutions and how scenarios might develop. I do want to reiterate that these planning regions are a starting point. This is not the end all be all scenario. Certainly every time a solution comes out of the planning regions, we're going to confirm that it does address the other guiding principles, including strengthening feeder patterns. It includes alignment with the vertical teams. So, this is meant to be a way to introduce creative ideas to start the process. We're going to check it and verify it and cross-reference it just with about every other dataset that we have, but we have to start somewhere and we wanted to start from a place that allowed for a create, a creative process, or creative ideas to come in. So, we'll talk a little bit more about guiding principle, I mean about, sorry, draft map B and the question and, when you have questions, the question and answer portion, but that's really the framework for B. And lastly is draft map C. The planning regions, based on feedback we've gotten from various folks, what we endeavored to do here was to just bundle vertical teams. So, you can see in the north, we had the Anderson Lanier vertical team. We bundle McCallum, Reagan, and LBJ. You can see what that region looks like. In central, we bundle Austin and Eastside, southeast Aikens and Travis High School, and then southwest Bowie and Crockett. Again, what we were trying to do here was to communicate to the board what it might look like if you, if you held consistently the vertical teams in the planning effort, you know, created larger planning regions, but again, kind of created that vertical alignment. And so, you could see what that looked like. One of the reasons we didn't start here is because the vertical teams can be messy. And so, in an effort to, to be disruptive in how we think about planning, we went to a solution that was more east to west oriented. So, I'll pause there and we can answer any questions. Renee is here with DCC and the rest of our team as well to answer any questions you might have, including next steps.
Thank you. Trustees' questions? Trustee Tisch and then Wagner and then Matthias. Did you have? And then, yeah.
Thank you for this and I really appreciate your considering an arrangement of the, the schools in fashion, other than the seven planning regions and moving to five. Could you tell me again the difference between map B and map C?
Yeah, so, map B and C, the main differences are based on feedback about vertical teams and kind of confusion. So, map C clusters two vertical team, two or three vertical teams together and the schools within that assignment, vertical team assignment for regional planning. The what, the map B does not have pure vertical teams. It's an east to west configuration to really challenge us to think differently.
I see. Okay, so, and I really appreciate that. I think both of these maps increase the diversity of our schools and I think that's something that, that I and some other trustees were concerned about and some community members too, so I appreciate that. I was also looking at the demographic breakdowns and it does, I think, better than the, than the draft map A that has the seven regions, provides for more diversity. I would have to take some more time to kind of look at this to decide which I prefer, but when looking under draft map B and north central, that box there, the 7,645, that's elementary students? Is that what that ES stands for?
Yes.
Okay, that's elementary students. Okay.
And, and to clarify, that's the live-in population?
Pardon me?
The live-in population.
The live-in population.
Correct.
And that's the same for both of these?
That's correct.
B and C? That's underneath each one of the, the region areas, there's a number and that's, that would be live-in. Okay. I also appreciate the work that you did on the, the guiding principles and the KPIs. And I appreciate the attention to, to diversity and once again, that, that staff has, has put into this planning. I think that's all I have for, at this point.
Thank you. Trustee Wagner?
Thank you for the continued iteration on all of this. I know it's been a long and winding path to get us here, but first and foremost, just to get it out of the way, because every time I see it, it like stands out like a flashing light. Can we get rid of the fabulous schools line? I know we keep joking about it and laughing about it, but it honestly is almost becoming a sore spot for me because it, it's such a fluffy phrase that, in, in a document that is quite serious and I just like it to have something that feels a little bit targeted and professional for our schools. As far as the maps go, I appreciate the additional options. When I start to see something like draft map B, I think what I appreciate about it is that I feel like it's getting us closer to my, allaying my fear about having the data that becomes aggregated that we were seeing in draft map A, particularly on the, the central south and central north, you know, where I started to get concerned that, you know, we could start to mask some data if we had it that way as compared to things like southwest being by itself. Where I do see a little bit of difference though is like in south, I think we could have, the data may skew a little bit differently than south central, because just in looking at, you know, relative economic status. But what I do like also better about this as well on draft map B is that where I usually start to see kind of, when we start to see some of those domino pieces that kind of move as you adjust things back and forth, it feels like in draft map B, we start to capture those areas a little better, where sometimes if we're talking about something happening like in Baranoff, suddenly Menchaca is impacted, you know, and things like that. So, it seems like it's a, a little bit better of a, an overall area capture that starts to encompass that piece as well. So, so my preference at first blush is for B. So, just in reacting to those, the, the other thing I did want to, to just ask some questions about, and I'm glad you're here, Mr. Ties, because this is really around communication more than anything and it's, I was at a presentation about a week and a half ago where we had someone from facilities there to speak to the, the southwest regional boundary change that we're examining right now. And we also had somebody come to speak about the school changes process. And both of them did an outstanding job speaking. Both of them were great and on message, so absolutely zero criticism of each of them as individuals, but there was absolutely no correlation between their two presentations. So, for anybody sitting and listening to that cold, I would have been horribly confused by what I was being told because here in one presentation, I'm being told that we're making all these boundary changes because of X, Y, and Z. And then five minutes later, I was told that we're about to examine all of these regions for planning and this is how the regions work and the reason that we're looking at regions is because as we start to look at things like boundaries, it could be impacted and influenced. So, it was a really kind of challenging messaging to reconcile and so, and particularly thinking about messaging based on where we are presenting within the district, I think is really important to consider as well because the types of issues that are going to be top of mind for someone in southwest Austin may be very different than the types of questions that parents in northeast or northwest or southeast are coming into those conversations with. So, it's, I just want to make sure that we're really mindful of our audience, where they're coming into the conversation, and also being mindful of other things that may be present in terms of other conversations that they're encountering at the same time, whether that's their need to even talking about, you know, school consolidations or closures in their neighborhood, or their need to even talking about a boundary change in their neighborhood, or, or those types of things that are ongoing conversations. So, just making sure that we're, we're really thinking through the mindset of the audience that we're, we're reaching.
Certainly alignment and messaging is always a challenge in, in a big organization and sometimes the left hand doesn't know when the right hand is presenting, so we can work to, to find avenues for that in regard to different messaging in different ways. I, I'll just point out to an exercise I did with my, my full staff recently where we took on what I call different personas and we assigned those out within groups of four and five people and we talked about school changes and what issues might come up if you were that, within that particular persona or individual and they ranged from all regions to all ages and, and retired. One example might be, we had a retired couple who had no longer had children in the district and we're talking about school changes. Like the number one thing we realized that maybe that they would be interested in is the traffic flow to any school change that may be. So, we know if we were talking to, say, neighborhood associations, that that's something that maybe we hadn't thought about before, that we would need to bring up to, when we're, we're talking about different types of people in different regions.
Can I ask for clarification? Because we try to keep the message consistent and, but maybe say a little bit more about what you mean behind that, so that I know that we're trying to address the, the concern or maybe just the, the issue that's raised. Is it a different message? I'm not sure. So, I just wanted you to explain that a little bit more, because you talked about from the individual.
Yeah, with the concern. We know what, yeah, that help is with, with the concerns, but we didn't talk about changing the entire message.
Right. But I'm not sure. I just want to know more. What would a different community, you know, I'm just asking?
And I would say if, if I were a parent of a student at Norman or Sims Elementary School, I would come to that conversation with a far different set of questions than if I were a parent at Keiker or Baranoff, because the, the conversations that have been happening in each of those schools' communities are very different. You know, we've got one school community that's been talking for two years about consolidations and closures. We've got another school community that's been talking about seeing a 153% enrollment in their elementary school and how are we going to get relief? So, those are really different conversations and so, I think it, we can come across as being a little bit tone deaf if we don't understand that those are the questions that are top of mind for parents when we're coming into a conversation. And it also means that people tune out and think this doesn't pertain to me if you come and you're only talking about, you know, particular aspects of this. And so, I don't think we can, everything, like, I don't think standardized messaging can be everything to everyone. If you do that, then you, you dull it down to the point where it's not reaching anybody. So, I think there has to be a bit of understanding of your audience and where you are. And I saw you guys did that a little bit when you were planning like the, the larger conversations, that we had two conversations that were more about, you know, economic outlook and two conversations that were targeted in different messaging. So, there is a little bit of that happening and that's, that's the type of customization I'm asking for. Not that we go completely off message or we suggest a completely different strategy, but that you just recognize, recognize who you're talking to at this point in time. And, and I do have to ask the question too, you know, and I, and I think this is a question I direct to you, Dr. Cruz, is if the right hand and the left hand don't know what the other is doing, why is that the case? Why are we going out and talking to large groups of people in the same breath with two different things that can be in conflict? You know, how do we get to a point where we can start to reconcile those things? And, you know, when we're talking about these, these larger issues around facilities, it doesn't seem like we should have as many things in play as we do, or, or that there shouldn't be a way we could reconcile this.
Well, let me first say, the topics that were brought up are district-wide. They may be held at a school, but it's not for that school. So, it's just basically if that's where you want to go for the meeting, you can go to the meeting there.
This was a vertical team meeting for the Bowie vertical team.
Oh, I, I thought you meant about our, our conversations around the reinvention.
No, I'm talking about like, if you're going to talk to the Bowie vertical team.
I agree. Then those should be specific to that community.
You should know that, that community has those particular interests and needs.
Correct. I agree. That's correct.
And, and I think that's not a fault upon the presenter. I think the presenter was staying on message to what had been established as the message that we were going to roll out universally around the district. But walking into a room with a group of schools that are dealing with a very volatile boundary change and then talking about school changes after it, it, it was confusing. And, and so, I think it's just understanding that what's in play with different audiences at different times.
Right. I agree with that. When it's a vertical team conversation, the ones about school change were really so the entire community knows what we're doing.
I'm not faulting those. I just told you, I said something complimentary about how I appreciate you have the two different messages.
No, my question was on the previous comment that you had said, but I was referring to the school changes conversation, that we try to keep those consistent and not have it be a foregone conclusion. Like, we're going to just talk to you about closure because this is where it's going to happen. Otherwise, we would have wanted direction to say, very different from what trustee Andrews has said, all schools have to be in. So, I just, I know you're not saying that. I'm just trying to clarify that that's not what, that I'm, that's not, that's not what I'm hearing. And if I, if I did hear you say that, then I'd want you to say it. But, so this information is basically, they're just held throughout the communities on the school changes. I agree on the vertical team specifics of what we're doing with Baranoff or even boundary changes. It has to be specific to that particular issue with that, within that community. I also think that when we, I think that when we present this information, we have to be very consistent, even though it's in a three-week period of time, the same message that anybody who attended a meeting in north central or northeast has to be consistent and the same message that we've then shared in the same maps that we've shared with a community in south Austin or east Austin or whatever. That has to be consistent, so then when we ask, what did collectively folks say? The key points never changed. The maps never changed. So, I just, we've, don't want to ever get into that cycle that under the auspices of the process has evolved, well, the map changed. So, now if I'd have seen that map two weeks ago, I would have changed based on that. So, we're very intentional about keeping the same documents, keeping the same questions also regardless of where we were, because people just attended there because that's where they could go and try to provide as many opportunities, even if online. It was very consistent. So, I just wanted to clarify on that particular point. There are also some specific points that I think were raised and maybe trustee Andrews had already asked me the question, where we talked about on the guiding principles, because we have to make sure to get these cleaned up. One of the issues was around the assigned, well, two issues. One is around the performance of the school, where students would be assigned or not assigned. The other one, which is 2.8 under the guiding principles, the other is about strengthening the programming and the feeder pattern. So, a question that was raised before in several of the different groups is, should we prioritize one guiding principle and some factors over others? Now, that's an important one for many reasons, because a student has experienced a middle school coursework and if there's high school coursework to continue, we would need some transition time. It's not to say we can't ever do it, but how strong was that indicator among the board that that maybe be over other indicators? It's just a question, because I think the others were, probably had a little bit more quantitative information that was an absolute, when it's programming and strengthening feeder patterns, we're talking different program areas there, especially if a high school is not seen within the same scenario or region of the elementaries that already feed into that high school or to that middle school. That was a question that I heard when trustees, when we're having that initial conversation. I just wanted to reflect it and say that, did we address it in one of these? Is it not addressed? Do we want that to be the guiding light, to be that be the thing over some of the other indicators? You may have mentioned that already, Matias, but if not, I just wanted to put that out there, because that does have an impact on how these are created.
Coming back to the conflicting conversations though, can I ask you one additional question there, because I don't know if we're right completely on the same page just yet, and that is, if someone came to you in southwest Austin and said, "Explain to me why we're having all of these heated conversations about boundary changes right now, but then I went to this talk last night when you guys told me that next fall, we'd be talking about school changes and you guys would be talking about region-wide, district-wide, looking at these planning areas for things like boundary changes." How would you respond to that, that question if somebody asked that at this point?
Because I think there's some things already in play. Programming options or other programming options that we're pursuing already that we don't stop. Now, it may then group into a bigger conversation, but there are still some efforts right now going on that align feeder patterns, that are boundary situations that we can address now or not, but it's at least proposing that to say, do we want to do this for the upcoming year or not? But there are several factors that I can see or implications that are moving forward next year that we still want to move forward on the programming, so I'm going to keep it consistent. So, Aikens, there could be other implications if Aikens and the scenario changes. Do I think we should stop early college high school? Absolutely not. It can't stop. That process, the project needs to continue, continuing with wind monosori up to the next grade level. These are other things about consistency. I just use that whether it's a boundary change or a program change or some other type of, type of initiative, yes, it has to continue because that's immediately before us. We can't stop, one, to say, let's hold off until everything is finalized, because that could be a misstep. Now, I do think it would be important with the boundary advisory committee that if that's something that we don't want to move forward, then maybe that's something that we don't do at this point until we come back and then sort of wrap it all in together, but it's at least posing the question.
Well, but I think there's other things too, like some of the boundary changes that are being examined right now by the boundary advisory committee, actually, weak and feeder patterns, most of them do. So, you know, there are challenges that are being created that contradict some of what you just said. And so, I think that's, that's what I'm trying to kind of get to the point of, is that can we get to a place where we're not contradicting ourselves if we go out and speak about major district efforts like this? And if, you know, if us talking about a boundary change and all the things that we're trying to accomplish with it over here, some of it being in conflict with the stuff that we're talking about with the school changes, can we get to a place where strategically that we're aligning those efforts to the point where we can talk about them in a cogent way with our constituents? Because they are paying a close enough attention and they are well researched enough because these boundary changes matter so desperately to them that they notice and hang on every word. And so, if you're talking about strengthening feeder patterns and they know that those boundary changes are weakening feeding patterns, it's just creating more conflict. And so, those are the things I'm trying to sort of touch on in that right hand, left hand, knowing what each other are doing, is it really comes from a higher level strategic place. And it's not that we should put off that boundary change, we can't put off that boundary change because we're doing it because we have to create a boundary for the new elementary school that's opening in 2020. So, that is something that's time sensitive. So, it's, it's starting to really just think through how these, how these efforts tie together and be able to speak about them in a strategic way that makes sense. And so, I'm not trying to put you on the spot in the middle of a meeting, but it's a spot that I'm finding myself in where I'm having to defend the work of the district at times when some of the things that we're going out with and very public messaging are not, not driving with one another. And, and that only serves to erode trust within our communities and that's the last thing we need to be doing at this point in time.
So, may I, so trustee Wagner, we've, we've heard many of the same comments and concerns out in southwest Austin, and one of the things that we've recommended and we'll actually be communicating to the BAC tomorrow when they meet, is that, that process and timeline actually is absorbed into our overall changes timeline. We do recognize that the BAC will be making recommendations in August regarding boundary changes. It does do, does make an impact on the final recommendation. Typically, this would come to the board in December, but to make it all consistent, we're looking to have that roll into this. we're looking to have that roll into this overall effort. And I think that would help alleviate some of those concerns, just making sure that we get everything aligned. Because you're exactly right, we don't want to present something, and then two months later, present something different. And given bandwidth of staff, it's actually very difficult to do both of those kind of in parallel efforts. So we made that recommendation, and tomorrow we'll be getting feedback from the BAC, but that's going to be what we would like to do moving forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I also recognize that it's particularly challenging for our staff that's on the ground that are having to answer those questions real-time, to folks that are coming to the table, already upset and frustrated with some of the changes that are being proposed. And so, it's just as important, I think, for our staff to not have to walk into the lines then with incomplete information as well. So I appreciate the efforts to work to align those.
I think that, I think it's actually being responsive to parent concerns that are coming forward. So I don't know what's about, I'd see that we are asking people, we're talking, and we're getting feedback. That's where I think it should work. So that way, we know how to best inform our overall direction. But I do think it's going to be multiple points along the way that may come up. And so, you know, truly, I mean, I just see that that's where the, where staff's being responsive, to questions that are coming up, to concerns, but not saying that's off the table, it's just, where does this fit with the overall direction? I do think there could be many points along the way that I think we may be faced with that issue, and then others. In addition, that is just a challenging conversation. That's just, but it's an important one. And so I do appreciate all the parents who have been very involved and very engaged, because that is exactly what we want. We want to hear from them. And we've heard.
Thank you. Trustee Mathias?
In the spirit of wanting to help problems solve, what I'm hearing is, some trustees are preferring that we change the word fabulous to great, or some other adjective, if that helps to assuage concerns. What I'm seeing is, what I'm hoping is, at the end of this, we're making data-driven decisions. And what I'm seeing is, we're just, we're almost being overwhelmed with data points here. I don't know if administration and staff has thought through the weighting of these. That is to say, it just seems that, once you give, once we have all these data points, you know, we can, any of us can shift the levers in any certain way to be able to make, to massage this into a story that is, that is helpful to whatever it is that we're advocating.
Well, part of what the planning regions and the strategy behind that, and with these different KPIs, is to give us some flexibility and creativity, opportunity to be creative as we look at different scenarios that affect different regions. So, while it may look like a lot, you know, we can, we intend to come back with 10 to 12 scenarios per region, and then, from those scenarios, being, applying these KPIs and measures, and at that point, then weighing them as a team of what do, which scenario is most important to us, and is going to give us the outputs that we want for the regions.
Okay, don't, don't think I would...
So I just want to point out that that sounds subjective. I don't know, rather than being from a place of data-driven decisions, what I'm hearing is something that sounds a bit more subjective, and that concerns me.
So, to maybe add a finer point, one of the things that's important that I think I communicate well, is that, you know, we start with the academic vision, and recognize that there's so much opportunity from an efficiency perspective, from a deferred maintenance perspective, from an FCA, ESA score, you know, and those are all, you know, analytical, you know, that's just data. And so what I, what we didn't want to do was to go to a completely efficient analytical model, because what you'll find is, that will yield things that are not palatable. We ran that, we ran into that as part of the 2017 FMP process. You know, if you look from a pure efficiencies perspective, we're not going to get what I think is really the vision of the guiding principles document. So what we're endeavoring to do is to start with academics, have academics and human capital identify what the vision and targets are, and then, using analytics, you know, recognize that there's a lot of low-hanging fruit, there's a lot of opportunity, and all of those can be evaluated to kind of move us towards the academic vision. So while the targets might be a little bit subjective, it's the data to get there will be very analytical, and we'll communicate that to you. So you'll see, not only what the snapshot is, performance-wise, of any scenario, but also what the long-term projections are, what the operational maintenance costs for the next 10 years might look like, what the transportation costs might look like for the next 10 years, what any impact in deferred maintenance might look like. So it'll all be kind of founded in data, but the North Star is driven by academics, so harder to quantify analytically.
Sure. Just, if you're looking for a response to the KPIs, it seems to me teacher experience is one thing, and is important, but as I said earlier in this meeting, administrative experience is certainly important to this trustee. I don't know how other trustees respond to that, but certainly representing District 2 schools, we find it perhaps less administrator experience than in other parts of the district. Let's see, ESA per square foot, and FCA per square foot, I won't question them this evening, but it's difficult for me to understand that necessarily. And roll, let's see. Regional planning. I think my question is whether administration can help us and the public to better understand regional planning, so that as we look at these maps, we clearly understand what's at the heart of the decision with respect to the regions. Why is it that we're dividing these, the district into regions? What is it that's being proposed?
Well, by looking at, within each of the regions, and starting with the academic programming, so say we're looking at map B, and we look at the south-central region, and we look at and identify, what are the academic programs that currently exist in that region? And what programs would, do we want to add? What does the region want to add? What do we see, what programs might be missing there? Or how can we strengthen programming in there, from the middle school to high school, and then as well as elementary to middle?
Okay, so at the end of the day, we need to get to a place of school consolidations, I believe. We've lost 6,500 students from this district, we need to close schools. My question becomes, what does, what does this map of regions, how does it somehow help us? That is to say, is there some, is there some way for us to be able to say to the public that, yes, schools will close, but they won't fall in one single region? Do you follow my concern? As I say, according to these maps, map B is going to be, the central core of map B is going to be the place where consolidations will most naturally occur, because of the hollowing out of affordable housing from the city's central core. Are you able to help us to assuage any concerns with respect to what these planning regions mean with respect to the needed consolidation, or better yet, closure of schools in the Austin ISD?
So, trustee, the intent was to create broad enough regions that we could evaluate and identify what the improvement needs to be. If there are 2,000 seats in one area that are available, and we, you can look at the next five years, 10 years, and see that, based after the 2017 FMP, 2017 bond program being delivered, that number might go to 3,000. Right? So we have 3,000 extra seats in a planning region. If I look at removing 3,000 seats, I can do that in a variety of ways. I can potentially, you know, I can consolidate perhaps, I can look at adding programming, I can look at taking a school that might be underutilized and make that a receiving school, because that school has a better FCA score, ESA score, has academically, maybe performs better. And so, really, what we're trying to do at a regional level is determine what our target goals are. And, you know, getting to 100% utilization is probably not, you know, though it's the most efficient model, it's not palatable. Right? That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to move ourselves towards that target, and with the number of assets within each of these planning regions, we have a variety of ways to do so. And so that's really the intent of the planning regions. If we broaden it up, we don't focus only in one area and say, okay, I have to make this efficient and improve efficiency, I'm going to take this many schools offline. Our goal is to really think about it holistically, and this is one of the only ways we can do it, and it's look from the top down. So.
I follow you. So, what I would say is, at least with the maps, if administration were able to look at them again, knowing that Lhasa, and Eastside Memorial, and International High Schools will all be moving, as I say, it seems it leads to a change or two in some of these maps. Number, letter, map A, draft map A, is difficult for this trustee, insofar as it lumps together historically resourced schools, and it lumps together historically under-resourced schools. Essentially, it's the map of Austin's segregation. Map, draft map, draft map B, the challenge that it presents this trustee is that the central core is going to be most affected by the needed closure of schools. The upside of map B is that the economically disadvantaged students are spread more, except for in southwest Austin. But then again, we see vestiges of segregation, for instance, between the Aikens-Travis numbers and the Bowie-Crockett numbers, just it's reinforcing this resourced versus historically under-resourced storyline. Draft map C, the thought of Ortega and Oak Hill being together, especially in light of the fact that Eastside Memorial International High School will no longer be inside that region in map C, again, it just, it makes me wonder what's going on here. And I don't know if, for instance, if there's any, if staff and administration has considered a map of single-member district boundaries? We have seven single-member district trustees on the dais. I don't know what that means in terms of the mapping, or if that's been considered. I say that only because District 2 has the highest percentage of socio-economic disadvantaged students, at 93% of our district, 2 students. The question becomes, how do we make sure that those students are not disproportionately affected? And I don't know how to affect that through the mapping that we're seeing.
I, which you've, trustee, I think what you've identified has been one of our challenges, is just in about every iteration of these planning maps, you're going to find a conflict. We looked at balancing schools, well, then you have disproportionate number of students. You look at balancing students, then you have disproportionate number of schools. You look at regionals that go, regions that go east to west, then we, you know, could potentially be accused of masking, you know, certain things on the east side. And so it's, there's not going to be a perfect map. I think what we have to recognize is, which map starts us off in the most, introduces the most amount of creativity in a planning process? This is a starting point, it's not going to be where we end up. And that's what we hope map B does, but certainly, you know, we certainly, you know, think that there's room for improvement, perhaps, we just don't, we just need guidance. It's difficult.
It is, I recognize that. I just, I don't know that I am in a place of being able to support yet what we're seeing. I wish that we, as a board, could somehow come to some way where we all feel good and comfortable about what we're doing. This trustee is not feeling it. And I think the last point that I'll have before I rest, I feel like I'm swallowing too much oxygen here, is simply the challenge for our board to consider where it is that we're going to be in 10 years. That is to say, we've lost 6,500 students or so from this district, we continue to spread them over an increasing number of schools, something's not, something is amiss here. It just seems that this board needs to challenge itself, in my estimation, to decide how many schools, I don't want to paint this into like a Chicago scenario here, but what is the district, what is the Austin ISD 10, or 15, or 20 years from now, so that at the end of the day, in August, and September, and October, when various voices come to this, come clamoring to this boardroom, that this board doesn't succumb to the pressure and close two schools and call it a day? That's not the solution this trustee is looking for.
Thank you, trustee Mathias. We have trustee Singh next, and then trustee Ashin, trustee Allenz, and then trustee Cindy Anderson.
Okay, thank you. I know this is a really complicated process. I think, so I think I was probably one of the people who had some concerns about the vertical team situation. I'm not sure it's quite addressed in map C. I guess a more fundamental question I have is, I like what map B looks like. I think that jives with kind of what we had been talking about, with, you know, promoting some diversity in our schools, and looking more east-west, and things like that. So, very cool to see that. To me, this looks like the solution, you know, like, this is not an assessment of the current situation, right? Like, this is kind of what we're moving towards. I guess, a question I have is, is the idea that, let's pick one of these, let's say south-central, since that's where I live, are we saying that one of this, when you're developing your scenarios, you're going to be looking at this pink section of south-central, and coming up with ways where kids that maybe live in the west part of that region might be going to the east part, or vice versa? Or like, what are we, like, I kind of need a little bit more than just, we're going to make scenarios.
So, so it's going to start off with the academic and human capital kind of targeting. You know, they're identified targets. So, Michelle and her team will identify academic targets, you know, whether it's added programming...
Sure.
Whether, you know, we know what those sorts of things are. That'll be the framework, will then engage various folks within a kind of a think tank, and ideas to have them, understanding what the academic targets are, as well as what potentially might be some targets for efficiencies, like utilization, or FCA scores, ESA scores, deferred maintenance, things that are industry standards that you would typically want to move towards. They would then begin to develop scenarios, and the idea is, if we can figure out the academic piece, you know, we can use the guiding principles to make informed decisions.
Yeah.
You know, you talk about, we move students all the way across, well, you have to go to guiding principle number four, it talks about reasonability regarding travel time, duration, transportation cost.
Yeah.
Right? So there's always going to be a counter to any decision that we make, and it's going to be, you know, based on the targets we identify within leadership, as well as feedback we get from these think tanks. That'll inform organically what a scenario might look like, but again, leading with academics, and then we'll confirm it with the financial kind of wherewithal, long-term.
No, I get that. I guess what I'm saying is, like, this makes sense to me if we are actually going to be seriously considering moving kids across east and west. My concern is, like, we all want this to succeed, right? Like, we all want this to succeed. And so, I, maybe this is kind of like a macabre way of looking at things, but I was like wondering, well, how would this fail? You know, if this were to fail, why would that have happened? And in my mind, it would, you know, one vulnerability is that we are not taking into account the actual, the vertical teams. Like, I might be, like, I live in Oak Hill, so I'm south-central, but my neighbors, like people in my neighborhood, they don't really care what's happening at, you know, at Pleasant Hill, at Pleasant Hill or Beddeck. Like, so like, putting us in the same region is just kind of arbitrary, unless we're all in the same feeder pattern, then it would matter to us, right? Like, so that's what I'm saying, it's like, you know, it may turn out, at the end of the day, all of the schools that we end up consolidating in your scenarios will be in East Austin. It could very well be. But we're not going to say that, we're going to say, well, oh, look, five of them came from, you know, or one of them came from each of these regions, right? But they're all still in East Austin, you know, so the people living in East Austin, they don't really care about these regions. They haven't even seen these regions, these aren't even on board docs, and people are texting me, like, why aren't these on board docs, by the way? Which, I just took pictures of all of them, you guys may have seen me do that, I posted them on my Facebook page. But, so like, they're not thinking this way, and so I'm, I'm not, this is not really a criticism, this is just like me saying, because I take responsibility of this, too, just as much as you do. Like, I feel like I own this as well. And so I just want to make sure we succeed, and we can't, I just don't see how this is going to prevent, I would like some assurance that this whole process that we're doing is going to make sure that kids in East Austin aren't going to get screwed. I want, I know, sorry, I think I said that last time, too. I was, I thought I was saying the good word. I was going to say something worse. But, you know, like, so I know we're using a lot of words to describe scenarios, and the FSAs, and the, I'm so glad Michelle is here, you know, because that, it comes down to it, academics is what, you know, this is all about. But I still don't see how this is, it's just going to let us say, oh, look, we closed one school in north, one in north-central, one in central, one in south-central, and one in south, but they're all... one in south, but they're all, they all just happen to be in East Austin, you know? Is that what's going to happen?
So, I've been, I've tried to not jump to the end at any point. What we're trying to do is, is to recognize that how we've planned in the past, you know, how we've done things in the past has got us kind of to where we are, right? Whether it's by vertical teams, whether it's by feeder patterns, whether it's how we did the FMP, if we're trying to really think about this differently, then we have to start off with a different planning region. That's kind of the genesis of why we started to test how we might plan differently. You know, one of the things that, you know, to your point several meetings ago, you know, this has to be, the first scenarios that come out have to be fantastic. I mean, they have to be really creative, they have to be something that, you know, is inspiring, and we wanted to really challenge the way we thought about how we even start the process. And so if we started with vertical teams, then we might end up with where we are. I don't know. So, we really tried to test that. This is not meant, again, to be the end-all-be-all, this is meant to be a creative starting point. And I, Dr. Cruz and I, we've talked a lot about this. You know, certainly, that's kind of how we started the process, but, you know, we're here to get feedback and, you know, understand what the concerns are, because it is all of our document, you know, it's something we all have to be behind.
The other piece, as we look at our next December, we're opening three modernized schools. So, Manchaca, which, depending on the map, you know, is down in the south area, Go Valley Elementary, which is over in the, depending on which map, you know, but we have several of those that are being modernized, do fall more on the eastern side. We also look at Met Sancho Svallo, which are not on this timeline, but we are modernizing one of those schools. So, we do have more modernizations happening over on this side to create those environments for our students that we really want.
Yeah. No, I do appreciate all that. I think there's still a lack of clarity, even for me, even though I've been sitting and looking at this stuff for weeks. I will say that I do, okay, so that aside, so that was my one big thing. The other, which I'm still not sure I understand, but at least I brought it up, and it's something that's out there now. But the second thing, and it's probably even more important to me personally, is when I'm looking at the guiding principles, number one, you know, again, the academics are the most important here, and so I'm glad that's number one. I want to make sure that it's, that the public understands what we're talking about. When we're talking about B, the comprehensive menu of rich options to appeal to diverse students, and that mitigate programmatic deserts, because I have a sense that when we're talking about programming, we're talking about like the special programming, like dual language, or CTE, or a special fine arts program, which is, all that is really important. But I would guess that a lot of parents, maybe most parents, are more concerned about just the basic academic offerings at the school and the quality of that education. And I think the KPIs reflect that, you know, because we are looking at achievement, but it's not reflected in the guiding principles. So, I just want to make sure there's a little bit more alignment. Michelle, you had mentioned that at one of the school changes meetings, and I was like celebrating that you said that. But I just, I would really like to see that in the guiding principles document, that we're not just talking about special programs, we're talking about like, just, like, I want to make sure that every middle school offers geometry, you know? I want to make sure that every high school offers AP science classes, or like, whatever it is. I don't know what that minimum requirement is, but I just want to make sure we're not having autonomy at the expense of equity, you know? So, I'd love a response.
Well, I was thinking on our intent in this, first, the guiding principle, just the one, even without the letters underneath, ensure equitable access to programmatic opportunities and engage and inspire all students. To me, I interpret that as our common foundational programming for all students at every school. But I'm also hearing you would like more, or feel there's a need to have more specificity on what that, what the foundational programming is.
I feel like we do, because, yeah, because I feel like there might be disagreement, because I mentioned this at one of our retreats and was kind of, for lack of a better term, shot down on that, you know? And so, I just need some clarity on, are we talking about, like, what is number one? Because I really, it's going to be hard for me to approve this when we vote on it, if it's not, if we're not super clear that we're also including the basic academic programming. To me, it's like a gaping hole, you know, I know I'm being hyperbolic, I don't even know if I said that right.
Using a hyperbole.
Using hyperbole. But like, to me, I'm just like, well, that's nice and all, but what about like math class? Like, you know, are we going to make sure that all kids are getting like, you know, the proper levels of math and language arts and everything like that? So, so that was my other big point. I'll stop now.
That I do think is something we have to address, is the consistency in programming that gets into AP, pre-AP. I think it's coming more about college readiness and the way we define it. So, early college high school is very intentional to get to a certain outcome around college readiness. Pre-AP, AP have been around for a very long time around college readiness. And we have, I don't say it's so much autonomy, we brought in the program to support student need, and it's continued. But I do think that is worthy of a reflection on us to see, why is it that we offer this over something else in different areas? But I'm very much around Algebra I, geometry, consistency among middle schools. There are other things in there we need to take a, that I know we've had in the place, but just over time, some things may have slipped off.
Yeah.
And I need to make sure that we are having that basic requirement beyond just, we offer language arts at the school, or what are the specific classes that are offered?
Sure. And I love the early college high schools, I'm so glad we're moving in that direction, but I also have to wonder, like, we're making an assumption that kids that feed into schools that are early college high schools, if we're not offering substantial AP classes, we're making an assumption that they can't. And I know that a lot of colleges will look at AP, they'll look at that more favorably than dual credit, not saying that one, I don't really know which one is better, all I know is that some colleges do look more favorably at AP, because that's a national, you know, program, and so, and there are no barriers, as far as I know, to do an AP class, whereas with dual credit, you have to have a certain TSI score. So, I think about equity from that sense. And, you know, I remember when Geronimo had read our equity statement a while back, we talked about how, or at least when we were writing it up, we talked about like zip codes should not, you know, predict your, you know, your access to education. And so that's what this is, that's what's driving this. So, I feel like we need to have like another bullet or something here that just says, like, you know, the core academic program, not just programming, but the core academics, and then like the extras as well.
Okay. No, I think that's something we'll all go back with the team and reflect on, just to put out there, on college readiness, we looked at the academic readiness, the socialization readiness, but then the economic realities in that readiness. So, it really took a three-pronged approach to look at, are kids ready, not just academics, like, did you get the TSI or not? Well, can you take the classes? Are they even offered there? Or do you have to just go figure it out, and you're fourteen years old, trying to figure out how to take the college courses, so that to be on the campus? But it was, we're an academic-ready, socialization, that's where we have the project advance specialists, that we have the direct connection with DTC seventy, that have the texting that goes on to inform students about what's happening in college visits. Garrett Grant, that was just celebrated, there's a reason how it sort of follows a path here. And then the other is just the economic piece.
Sure.
But anyway, that's, but I do think it's important to come back and reflect on it, because all of it comes with a specific intent, as to, trying to realize a specific outcome.
And if we can't do that now, I understand, that's like, doing an audit of all the coursework is a bigger task than maybe we feel like we can do right now, but I feel like it has to be at least mentioned, like, it's going to happen. And just one more quick third thing, I'm sorry, I forgot. I just want to get some idea of how principals are being engaged in this process, because I will tell you, we passed the map out at a vertical team meeting, and people were a little bit surprised, like, principals were surprised, they had not, they said they hadn't seen it. And so I just feel like, you know, we're going to really need the principals to buy into this whole thing, because they're going to be our champions, right? They're going to carry, they're the ones that are on the front lines, getting questions from parents and teachers and everyone, so I feel like they should be just as engaged in this as we are. So, where, how are they being engaged?
So, that's a great question. Principals, we first engaged our vertical team lead, they saw the draft of our power, the parts of our toolkit, they were going out first to get feedback from them. It's also been shared at UE two point O with all of our principals and central team members. And also, we hit some on the principal PLC when we last met with them. And then thought exchange, they've gotten to participate in that as well. It was also a human capital finance roundtable, where they went through the maps with Matthias.
Well, we actually had the principals in an exercise, help us delineate some of the regions, and we started off by telling us, draw a bad region, you know, let's reverse it, because it was hard to communicate the ask until we reversed it, and said, tell us what something bad would look like. And that was quick, they could do that.
Yeah.
And so once we kind of had that discussion, you know, we were able to kind of get them to draw some more for us, and really that helped us really push the east-to-west kind of regional planning solutions. That was really one of the things that came out of that discussion, that has resonated with a lot of these iterations, just for content.
Well, that's good to know that they've seen these maps before, because that was not necessarily the impression I had. So, maybe they saw and didn't know that it was like actually going to be used, or I don't know what it was, but there seems to be some kind of a, you know, maybe a disconnect somehow, but I just wanted to convey that to y'all.
Thank you, trustee Ashin.
So, I'm going to date myself a little, because I feel like what I'm about to do is the elementary school books, where you would read like three, four pages, and then it would say, now you have a decision. If you want to do this, go to this page. If you want to do this, go to that page. So, I'm asking for your patience a little, as I feel like I'm about to wait for your answer and then figure out where my next question goes, really, so I apologize, everybody. So, my first question, and I feel like I'm probably at a different place mentally around these regions, mainly because we had something similar, not exactly the same, but around the facility master plan with figuring out, but they were smaller, and it was the clusters, I believe is what we called them. And I remember having very similar conversations to what we're having right now, for very multiple meetings with people not really understanding. And it wasn't until we saw the first data that we started to get it. So, that's probably, my first question is, how soon would we see scenarios that be provided to us?
So, the schedule, as of right now, assuming that we move forward, the planning regions within the next week would have us out in the community, the first and second week of June, talking about kind of the vision academically for the planning regions. We would then have our think tank work sessions the third week of June. Out of that will come between ten and thirteen scenarios per region. At that point, you know, we'll be able to, from June all the way through the beginning of July, we'll be running analytics and all of it. Those will not go through the second rubric, which are the things that are less quantitative, but you'll see, you know, what these planning regions look, I mean, sorry, what the scenarios look like per region. Again, ten, thirteen, we'll have all the outputs from them, and then, so I would say, the second week in July is really where you'll see the analytics behind them. Prior to that, you'll see what goes into them, kind of what the thought is from all the feedback we've gotten, but we won't really have the outputs. Staff will have to take a couple of weeks to produce all the outputs for all the various scenarios. And then we're targeting the third to fourth week in July for the second think tank, and out of that will come the qualitative component of it.
And so will we see that data, we trustees, as that continues to go out? Does that make sense?
Yes. Well, the plan is to come back as many times as we need to, work sessions, you know, whatever we think makes the most sense, but we are trying to, you know, as part of the reinvention roadmap, you know, just have as many work sessions that are required. So, yeah, the intent is just like we have since we started, to be here every single month. And if that's not enough, then, you know, we can talk about what needs to happen.
But in order to do that, you need to know which map?
We are targeting to have the maps more or less finalized this week. We have to start somewhere.
Okay. So, then, so see, look, I hear my little, which page am I going to go to in my head? So, I'm looking at all three of these maps, which, depending on the outcome that's desired, would bring forth very different information. A couple of things that jump out at me are, and I think this was helpful in the facility master plan process of getting me out of my bubble, out of the bubble of the few schools that I had a great deal of familiarity with. If you, if you look at, say, map B, it really kind of breaks apart all of the trustee districts a little bit, it feels like. And then, and so it feels like it might, it might pull us to maybe a little bit more of a creative place, or maybe to see things that we might not have seen before. And my question that's within that is, because you've said this isn't the end-all-be-all, it's kind of where we would start. So, how does that work if, once we start the planning regions? Because even in all of the time that we worked with the planning clusters, the cluster divisions didn't really change. They still stayed within their boundary that was originally drawn. So, how do we, or how do you expect to be able to modify scenarios? I don't know if that I'm asking the right question. How do you, like, if, for example, in map B, the feed zone for DOS is in north-central, and the feed zone for Hill is in north, that, and that can yield some very different and interesting results, I think. And yet, the fluidity between the two seems like it might be interesting, okay, well, what if we brought Hill into it? Okay, well, what if we moved DOS that way? Is that a possibility, or no, once we decide on the map?
No, that is a possibility. These are not in isolation, you know, they're going to play out one another, each planning region will inform the other. You know, the idea is we start from the elementary schools, look at the programming, you know, look at how those feed into middle schools, look at the programming, the feeder patterns, look at how that goes into high schools, at the same time, trying to identify efficiencies in our systems, and running scenarios, see what this looks like long-term. You know, you're precisely correct, it's not the end-all-be-all. You know, certainly, how the DOS programming works and where the students go is going to inform what happens in the north. And at some point, when everything comes out of this, hopefully it all blends together very well across a district-wide solution. We just can't manage all of it at the same level at the same time, we have to break it down. And if we break it down too granular, we believe that we lose creative opportunities. So, that's kind of the intent of the planning regions.
So, would you define this really as a tool by which to gain data, but not a definition?
It's a tool to incubate creativity, to start this planning process, the scenarios. That's precisely what it's intended to be. It's just a starting point to be creative. And maybe these aren't creative, but the process we're going to go through with the people that we have in the meetings, they will look at this and think of different ways to achieve some of the targets that academics puts forward, maybe based on things that we hear from the community, certainly maybe some finance and operational targets. And they'll be creative about it, because now they're looking at the district a different way. And that'll really start us, hopefully, in a, kind of new path, maybe a path that gets us where we have more innovative solutions, more reinvention-type solutions. My biggest fear is that we start off, and at the end of the day, get to something that isn't truly reinvention, or isn't something that's, you know, fabulous. I know we don't like that word, but that would be, we talked about things that would make it fail, that to me would be one thing that makes it fail, is just starting, getting something that we have already.
Okay. I do agree very much so with what trustee Singh said, that our principals really don't understand this, and they really don't, they, and they are the ones getting questions. I have gone to two vertical team meetings, and that has been the overriding message that I have received. And they truly do not understand how the school changes process combines with the facility master plan, and how those two And how those two work together. So I would hope that we would, we would work towards that, helping our, our principals and our, our PTAs to understand as best we can what they're doing. As far as choosing a map, I kind of feel like I'm in a place where I don't necessarily have a favorite because I think I see positive and negative to all three. Because there, we've had some discussions about this is our opportunity to talk about vertical teams. And that we would love to see more truly aligned vertical teams. So if we take these, the, the regions where they're not within that vertical team, are we gonna start pulling schools out of their vertical team? Like, is that what we're trying to, I can see some, some challenges with that as well. In a time where we've said that we would wanted to take the opportunity to strengthen vertical teams and make them more true. I, I do still love the idea of taking us across the, across the district. Because I think it makes us see things in a different way and gets us outside of our bubble. And on some level too, when you start talking about, if I look at map C and I look at the McCullum, Reagan, LBJ. And their list of schools is so many compared to the other regions. I, like, does that pose a huge problem or I, I, I don't know. I'm struggling and there's, there's a part of me that says, well, where, which, which map do you like? Because I, I'm kind of getting, I'm kind of getting lost in so much information that I, I can't make.
There, there's a conflict with every iteration of these maps. There, it, it's inherently in the design. We can't start from a perfect place. You know, that's where you want to end up. And so I, I think, again, if, the way I look at these is which ones introduce the most amount, the most amount of creativity early on in the process. That's kind of what I've thought to myself time and time again, as we've worked through these maps as a team. Is which ones start us with a creative academic discussion? And then from there, we'll verify that against vertical teams, you know, feeder patterns and everything else. But we have to start somewhere, so let's be creative.
I think if you're, for just, having seen these only for a few hours, I would say map B for me is probably where I see. It could, it pulls you out even out of your vertical teams to make you see that. But I can be talked out of it too. So I, I thank you. This is not easy. And I, I'm so grateful to you guys and all of your time and all you've been putting into this. And I hope we can continue to have good conversation that will help explain this to all of our students and families and taxpayers as we move forward.
Thank you, trustee Ash. I just want to point out to our trustees, we're, we were scheduled to, to close at 10 o'clock. I think without objection, I think we're gonna keep moving. We have about four other trustees. I think we'll probably be out of here at 10:30, but I just want to be respectful of y'all's time. Also, without objection, we can just move on to trustee Ellen's.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. A lot of things have already been said, but I do want to thank you tremendously. I, I, I think you heard us well and in some of the, the new language. And I want to clarify, the vote that we're scheduled to take this month is the recommended, just the guiding principles document. Did I miss that? Did y'all already say that? And so we are not being asked to approve the maps. You're just looking for our feedback. Okay. Okay. So then, and you're not looking for us to approve the KPIs either at this point?
No, the, the guiding principles, the, the format that we had previously introduced, which is guiding principles and factors. That was the document that we would like to move forward in the board agenda item, which does not include the KPIs tied to the factors.
Okay. So this doesn't say factors on it anywhere, so I think that is what threw me?
Yeah, we, I, I noticed that this morning. I apologize. We're, we're gonna fix that. Yeah, key performance indicators, we're gonna change that subtitle.
Okay. I will agree with trustee Singh. I do think it would be helpful to be very clear that our first basic point in the programming piece is the core education. I, it wasn't until I was a trustee that I realized not every middle school offered AP or pre-AP classes at all. Or not every high school offered all the AP options. And I, I, I think when we talk about equity and we talk about expectations, that has to be the starting point. We are a school district. And so I think we don't put it in writing because we assume it, but I think we have to put it in writing. So thank you for bringing it up and I, I do agree. I otherwise I'm, I'm pretty happy with this document. So I, I could, I could approve this in a couple of weeks. So thank you. Moving to the maps, just to, I want to kind of run through a little bit of what I think I heard. Matthias, you say, and my question, and the questions from trustee Mathias. So in maps, all of them, B and C, trustee Mathias and I pretty much share A, B, and C even. It, it's kind of between the us. And what I could, what I think I heard you say is that while trustee Mathias is worried about his part of town taking the brunt. What you are seeing is that there may be schools in his part of town that have higher ESAs, higher FCAs. And because there is a programmatic desert in my part of town, that there might be a way to offer some choice to take part of my town and put in his part of town. Not that specifically, but by incentivizing, by giving, encouraging people. I mean, we have no dual language in my part of town if we go with map A or B. So I could see a scenario that there's an option of a dual language program that is specifically offered to my part of town that resides in his part of town that might lead to a different answer. So that's how I think I'm seeing this play out, which hopefully, I, I like that. I, I hope that gives you a little comfort, but I, maybe that's not helping. But anyway, so I, I will go back there. But I will say, kind of to, we've been here before. Thank you. What I, you know, change is hard. What I like about map C, but it might be exactly what you don't like about map C, is I think that trustee Mathias and I could get together and we could work together with our districts and be the most help in that kind of scenario. Once you move into the other ones, we start, it's, it's less clear on being able to be collaborative as trustees. There, there are just kind of too many spaces for us to have to go and, and work. Maybe you don't need us to be collaborative with you. I don't know. But that was just my kind of takeaway with the vertical team. I do, I, I do appreciate trying to think differently. I will tell you when you, what's, what happened when people saw map A is all of a sudden every school of mine that's south of the river thought they were getting redistricted out of their middle and high school. So I do think that there's some language, some conversation that really has to go. I mean, you think about trustee Ash, all of a sudden, if DOS thinks they're not going to Anderson, I mean, that, what does that look like? And how are we gonna, how do we get ahead of that? But at the same time, maybe that is something that comes out of this, that we have some changes in our feeder patterns that might make sense. Because I will tell you, for me, strengthening the feeder patterns is one of my highest priorities. And that doesn't mean they have to stay exactly the same they are today. But I think when you have a high school, that the middle schools are preparing the kids for that high school. And, and the elementaries are preparing for that middle school. That's how it works and we can't blame a high school for a poor performance if the elementaries didn't prepare those kids for the middle to prepare those kids. And so when we, when we don't have strong feeder patterns, it's very difficult to find root cause. It's very difficult to bring stability. And so for me, we are a school district, that should be our priority. So I don't know which of these maps gets you there. And I'm kind of with trustee Ash. I, I defer to your expertise. I like the concept of B. I worry, is five enough? You, when you guys started, you started with seven. So does five give you enough regions or do you really need the seven? A is my least favorite. And C, I can help you the most as a trustee. So I think you just kind of have to think about that. I, I think that's really all I wanted to add. I do, I, I so appreciate that you gave us the different ways that you're thinking. Because I do think it's so easy for people to assume everything's a done deal. And I started hearing, oh, they're not changing the maps and there, there was, you know, and, and you're proving them wrong all along the way. And every time you do that, you build trust and faith that you really are listening and I, I appreciate that. I also like that you gave us the KPIs because that gives us some understanding of how you're going to use this information. And I, and I, that helps.
Thank you, trustee Ellen's. I just want to mention, because we are being responsive. This is taking feedback, taking something very complex and then putting more information out there and say, let's come back and review it, changing this. But bringing the nether, the next step. And then changing this one and this one and bringing the next step and being, and listening. We are really pushing ourselves to listen. It's not easy. Just in this, maybe I sometimes we change an elementary feeder pattern, elementary boundary, but we don't change the middle and the high. Maybe we should, because you just said, I prefer to strengthen the vertical program. There's nothing to say when we change an elementary, Beth, I'm not, Beth, Beth's voice activated. So if she says that she's gonna change the boundary just by her voice, so, you know, but there's a reason why we haven't done it in the past. And it's because it creates more angst and conflict. So we've just done, well, if we can do this here in this elementary, let's just do this for this middle or the high. Maybe we should go about it differently. I just want to know, we're good with that? Because the thing about the, the situation where folks don't see, because we, we have worked under feeder patterns for a very long time. We've, we reinforced it and people have allegiance to a high school. We love it. We, we want it to work like that. We really, really do. And we always want to strengthen that. It may have to change, maybe allegiance to a different school. But this is that step that we would take. And while this does not represent like we're changing feeder patterns and they're absolutes, it doesn't. Could people go straight, straight there? Absolutely. I think that's the, from a parent, you're saying, where's my elementary? Where's my middle? Where's my high? That, it's, it's very natural thinking. I think it is the right thing to think to question that. Is that gonna change? Is this gonna change? I, I think that this is, it's not intended to change it, but it is intended to evoke some more thought to our previous practices. And, and, you know, I, I will call it Beth at some point, because I know the boundary situations are pretty significant. Another thing that when we talked about this, when we talked about impact, impact on consolidations, impact on boundary changes, impact on programming, and Michelle mentioned some of those too. It collectively should be somewhat similar, or not similar, as impactful in different areas as one. Not to say that one is any more significant than the other, it's all relative. But I think it's got to be all comprehensive because we're not saying one strategy. So we're not saying the reason to do this, though, the way to fix this, change feeders and call it a day. We're actually starting to say, let's get as many kids and the best learning spaces as fast as we can. That is really job one. Then comes to the next point around all these other indicators under the guiding principles and the factors. We have talked about should we prioritize? But I'm thinking we, it's come up, but we have, actually haven't said to go ahead and prioritize one or two factors or maybe a guiding principle over another. So right now, it's, it still is subjective. So anyway, but the intent today is really present this to you to get you, to get some feedback. But could it be then, just like in the scenarios with facility master plan, I'm glad you mentioned that because then that sort of brings that to mind. It is ways, different ways to think. This doesn't make it absolute, like we are changing other feeder patterns. Unless I hear that, then I want, I need to hear that if we want to change the economic diversity with, across the district. This is a factor in here, but it's one of several that look at the, sort of the overall project. But anyway, I just appreciate that you said that it's being, it's changing, but it's been consistent until we bring it here. Once we're out there, it'll be consistent. I can assure you of that. We will not change those. I, I just, we won't. It's gonna be the same message. We're not gonna change them. Well, and then the end, the board approves, the final decision's in October. Not any of these, but I want to make sure that it's, it's being responsive to the board collectively where you think it may be. So I appreciate the feedback.
Well, and I just also to the principal point, I do think, you know, the board has said, you know, we want to, the overlying piece of the, you have the data, but we want to put the equity lens on top. But we've also said, we have to own, this is hard and this is not fair to make our volunteers shoulder all the burden. But it's the same with the principals. I, I think they need to be involved and, and, but it, I'm not, I'm not gonna criticize them for not, or y'all for not, for principals not knowing this yet because we haven't been in the, in the front of it. And so we, we will get upset if everybody knows it before us. So we really can't get upset if everybody doesn't know it until we do. We can't have it both ways. So I, I can understand that there's just a lag.
Thank you, trustee Anderson.
I'll try to be quick as well. I have a couple of comments on the guiding principles. I very much appreciate the item around programmatic deserts and especially trustee Singh and trustee Ellen's comments about ensuring that we have sort of a foundational expectation across the board. One of the things I'm not sure programmatic deserts has a connotation for, which I think is our end goal, has to do with gaps and outcomes. And so I, I'm not sure that gaps in programs necessarily addresses the fact that ultimately we're looking at better academic outcomes. And so, and I'm not necessarily asking that you change it specifically on here, but just in the context of, you know, maybe a future KPI or just the, the, the way we're applying this information, that our ultimate goal has to do with academic outcomes and, and programmatic pieces are one component of that. But they're not the solution to that. So I just wanted to make that point. The other one that I wanted to make, this one specifically, I personally feel like we might want to eliminate, which is two A. I feel like we did at one point, based on some comments that trustee Mathias made, I think a couple of iterations ago. And I'm saying so for two reasons. One being we may have scenarios where you have a, a school that has a B rating consolidated into an A rating. And conceptually, I think what we're going for is you're not gonna take kids from an A rated school and put them into an F rated school. But there's gonna be some more minor differences between the academic performance. And by the same token, we have quite a few folks, including myself, that state that the accountability results are just one measure. That really does tell the, the story of, of the, of a particular campus and what they're actually doing for kids. And so I feel like we're relying a little bit too much on the fact that, I mean, that's something that we didn't create. We didn't set the criteria for. That's not including other really important characteristics of schools that have to do with, you know, culture and climate. And often accountability ratings can be impacted by very small cohorts of kids. And so I feel like that's very limiting in a number of ways. And, and kind of like, again, reiterates that, that that has more meaning perhaps than in other cases we don't want it to have. And so for me, I, I feel like I have an issue with that being in there because I feel like it's too limiting and, and actually would impact flexibility that we have to, to make some changes that again, are, are, don't contradict the overarching goal of what I think we intended to do with that. I also wanted to comment on feeder patterns, which in one sense has to do with map C. But also I feel like we're saying in this document that we are looking at opportunities to adjust feeder patterns for a couple of reasons. And that change doesn't negate the fact that you can have strengthening through change. Because there, there is a reality to complaints parents have had over the years from the number of split schools. Have cohorts not matriculating together, inconsistencies in curriculum. And so I feel like we're saying that, that strengthening can be done in a number of ways, but it doesn't mean we're keeping them the same. And so by that same token, I feel like map C kind of implies that this is something that is being preserved as opposed to being blown up to being looked at in a completely different way to best serve kids overall. And so I, I just, I prefer map B for that reason and also because it does provide more opportunities, I think, for integration than, than map A was. But I just, I want to make sure that in the, the guiding prin- But I just, I want to make sure that in the guiding principle document that we're being as transparent as possible about feeder patterns, that folks aren't assuming that, you know, aside from perhaps feeder pattern changes that have a direct correlation to a boundary adjustment specifically or even a consolidation specifically, that we wouldn't also be looking at other ways to really improve those feeder patterns. So that's pretty much, I think, all I have.
Thank you.
Do you want to address a little bit, just about the achievement, the performance one? Because we have gone back and forth on that one, but, so that's a, that's to the document. And I don't know how to get to a resolution on that one.
School agrees. I agree.
Okay.
Well, that's just three.
Right. I just want to get an idea. To remove? Okay. So we will remove 2A.
Trustee White?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get feedback.
I know I spoke at length earlier and I may be the only thing staying between us and going home, so.
I've got some comments as well.
The thing that keeps kind of coming up to hit me in the face as we're going through this is that I keep seeing us winding up in this pattern over and over and over again as a board. And that is that we have a board that tends to get so paralyzed by overanalyzing the details of everything that sometimes I think we stand in the way of just being able to step aside and let staff do their work. And I think us doing that beats you guys into a position where it's hard to take a stand because we pummel everything that you bring us. And so at this point, the position that I'm in is that I want to step aside and let you guys decide what the right map is because you guys are going to be the ones that are working with this map to bring us a final recommendation that we will have the opportunity to vote on. And I don't think it's fair to y'all to have to sit with us for hours and hours and hours while we nitpick every tiny little point of this map over and over and over again. I think we've made our points clear. I think you guys should, at this point, be abundantly clear on where everyone stands. And I'd like for us just to be able to let you guys do your work at this point, so.
So. Everybody's looking at me. I like it. We'll do it. We're coming back though, right? Oh, definitely. Believe me, the team members are very skilled. This has been, we have not taken this lightly. So we appreciate your comments because we know how important this, we know how important this is even as parents, as from the parent perspective. This is important and it's needed time and it's due diligence. So, you know, appreciate the comments, but it does get to that point. We just want to make sure we're, have points along the way of just conversation.
But I think at times we forget as trustees that when we get, there is so much consternation at the table and we're firing up social media and everybody's getting fired up about that, we're suddenly pointing to this map as being the problem rather than just one building block in a much longer process. And I feel like we're starting to assign unnecessary importance to these maps that are in turn distracting our community from the bigger picture at hand. And that's why I, we've got really important work to do. And let's not get bogged down at this point in the game. Let's keep focused on the bigger picture because we've got to stay strong as a board and we have to stay strong as a greater team of administration and staff and board to get this work done effectively. And the more we pick it apart, the harder it's going to be to get to that place.
So I know I said we'd be done at 10:30, so I want to make sure that, I just wanted to make sure that all the trustees got input before. I just want to, I just had a couple of more points to make. One, I think the reinvention guiding principles document, if you want us to have owned it and stuff, I think one of the things I've heard a lot of trustees, and this includes me, I would just remove that top sentence about how we're committed to ensure it's fabulous schools inside and out. It just makes it such a stronger document with just leaving that completely out. And you know, at 10 o'clock or 10:30 at night, I get really confused with the word fabulous because I'm bilingual. So I start thinking about fabuloso. And that is definitely, see, Sessos over there pointing as well. I don't think of our schools as like, anyway, if you don't know what fabuloso is, you can Google that for yourself. I think the. It is not. The other thing, because if you're looking for input on the maps, map B, I think, is probably for me a really good step in this journey of believing that we are a part of a school district, not a district of schools. And I think we continue to have that conversation and that balance. And I don't know where it is, but I'm not sure we're there yet. And I think one of the other things I appreciate is the east to west and how, you know, to put it in your terms, Matthias, creative, innovative, whatever the right word is. I think one of the things that happens is when you become uncomfortable, it's when you grow and you learn. And I think this is making us uncomfortable and I appreciate that because I want to be uncomfortable because equity and making long-lasting changes that really improve the ability of our entire school district to improve every student's performance is hard work and it's uncomfortable. And that's the right place, I think, to be. And I think for us, you know, I might say this in a different way than trustee Wagner said, but I think I'm saying almost the same thing. There is a role for this board to play around managing change. And I think for us, you see, I hope that you see probably this board supporting the administration in pushing forward and making change. Change is not easy, but we have a role to play and you all have a role to play. And I think it's symbiotic and supportive. So however that plays out, I don't think we should be a barrier to you all proposing what is the right thing to do for our kids. Because this impact is not just today. It's going to be a decade from now. And I think that's what we trust you and your team's judgment around making the right decision for students. And so to me, that's, and I'll stop there because I think, I promised 10:30 and there's three minutes left. So I'll give you the last word in case you want to say anything. If not, we'll close for adjournment. Words. I meant words.
I was going to say fabulous, but now I'm not. I can never use a word again. I'm going to have to Google it in Spanish too, or talk to Sessos. But no, I appreciate that because that is what we need. That is what we need. It's not, these are small steps. A scenario, a map, a boundary change, a new program, potential, new school. There's stuff happening whether we want to or not within TA Brown and just new schools coming up that we're going to have to address these points. But these are all, like you were saying, these are little, that little, significant steps along a strategic outcome. And we're trying to get as many kids as we can, as fast as we can, in the best, modernized, 21st learning spaces. So I appreciate those ending comments.